Okay, it's twelve thirty, Thursday, February thirteenth, and we're gonna start our select board meeting. Just wanna skip this pledge?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll skip the pledge. We're gonna go right to item three, Old Business Town Report.
I don't know which order we wanna do any of this stuff in. I have... I started laying out the town report to make sure we have all the...
Pieces.
All the pieces. You guys approve.
Yep.
Yep, I like them both.
Yeah, I love the flags.
The other one, I had another one that I have here. Too much stuff to go in here. Oh. If you'd like.
I like the other one better. Oh, what is it? Got the stained glass windows on it?
Yeah, it does.
And as opposed to this?
That will get 'em going.
As opposed to I stole this off the internet.
It doesn't have a copyright or anything, does it?
No, it doesn't.
Oh, well, you stapled. What hap-
Oh, it's going to slide off there.
Oh, boy, our engine goes.
Oh, boy, there's the, there's the... On my end. Wow, glad nobody's ever out on that end of the building, 'cause...
It comes crashing down.
Yeah.
I like the other one, too. Yep. Alright.
So just going through things that we do and don't have. Obviously, the table of contents will be when we get all of that figured out. All the letters. We need a few more letters. There is no road commissioner's report in the last two.
Oh!
But I'll add, I'll add one.
I don't give, I don't know. We've talked about it. I don't know if you wanna do it or not, but there is gonna be a lot of question about what we wanna do this year.
Yep, so if I put it out there in front of everybody.
Yeah, I think it's a great way to cut, some people probably don't know your road commissioner yet. This is a great way for, okay.
I had a person who's been contentious come in looking for the road commissioner the other day, and she was absolutely all smiles even though she had a problem. And was just...
Plowing issue?
No, it was, um, well, she keeps... Yeah, it was partially a plowing issue, and she scoops her driveway, so when the plow goes by at some time, it annoys her.
Oh.
But she's on Pleasant Ave, so I'm like...
Oh, well, they didn't ask, that's good.
Yeah, so I, well, I could say I couldn't help, I can't help you, 'cause I didn't, I didn't do it.
On Pleasant Ave?
Yeah.
I know in my house, the way my luck is, 'cause I have that luck, every time I plow my driveway and get it all done, that's the time they come by for the second time, so it's the way it works.
Um, oh, what was I gonna say? In that, Bridget, I just checking for Rick, behalf of him, the, the, his letter and the hospital note?
Yep.
Okay.
There, let's see. I haven't got that part yet. Library, Parks and Rec. Oh, you guys wanted to see... And since I have to call her, I could bring it up after the meeting. Yep, here's, here's Rick, and then here's the...
Perfect, perfect.
The only letter that I wanted to talk to you about was the one on the building. When I read that quickly, like, when I, I was trying, I read it once, 'cause I know everything we've done, and I was perfectly fine with that.
Okay.
And then I was like, I read it again. So then I read it the third try, it's like, well, what if you don't know anything?
Okay.
And you're reading this letter. So I was trying to envision it.
Right, like...
Trying to read it, like, this is all brand new.
Right.
And when I read it, trying to think about it that way, way, we got the letter, I, I don't know what, is it important to put some of the actual physical timelines in there? Because if you read it in the perspective that nobody knows what's going on, it sounds hurried.
Okay.
Like we've, you know what I mean, like, we've really just come to this conclusion, hurried up, and this is where we're at. And I don't, I just think it's important that people understand that, I mean, we've, we've met about this, and, I mean, we've talked about this in meetings several times. This wasn't a rash decision to have a contractor. I mean, it was, because we needed to, but we talked about one, and then we had another one come in, and then we actually met with...
Oh, this has been a process.
Right. We met, had a workshop with the public.
Right.
And we had the public here, and as a group, we all agreed that we ought to have that engineer come in.
That's right.
So that's kinda what, I think, you know what I mean, that's kind of important, that everybody understands that this has been a process.
It's been a process.
We've done a new building.
We've got everybody involved that, that we can at this point, that's all.
Right, right, right. Yet, we are moving along, because it's something...
Hundred percent, but I just was trying to, you know what I mean, it's different when you try to think about it, reading it that way.
Right.
Okay, read the circled and red piece, and, and see if you want me to address it.
Wouldn't this be nice if we had, like, an overhead and, you know?
Be nice if we had an eighty-inch TV in here, and in that way, they'd be all...
Your new building will.
Yep, the new one will. Yeah, I want that, Chris. Read that loud, everybody.
Yeah, you can read it into the...
Yeah, the, uh, "The Sangerville Historical Society once again served dinner at the annual town meeting, but since the location this year has been changed, the society will not provide the service. The dinner and the very successful plant and shrub sale that the Sangerville Historical Society held in the spring helped offset the museum's operational costs." Uh, we, I think, the thing that I thought, well, the change of location, that's an interesting, I'm not sure what that means, but we had been told prior to, back to Lois...
Middle of summer.
That they weren't gonna do the dinner anymore, long before we ever announced the change of location. So this is a, a new rationale. It may be real, but it's, we were told originally.
Well, if it is the reality, I'd like to know why, because there's, there's...
Better kitchen.
It's a better kitchen up there. Everything is available at that location to provide a better meal.
Well, this kind of, this kind of brings, I, I have a couple items on the budget that I, I don't feel like we thoroughly discussed. We, we were part of their whole thing, but I still think there's a couple items that, and, and one of them is the Historical Society. Because we just almost, and I'm as guilty as anybody, because I was on the, I was on the budget committee for, like, two years. I've been a selectman now for three years, and I have rubber stamped eight hundred dollars as though I...
To the, without a question.
Well, I, first of all, I thought they were part of the town. I thought they, after talking to Bridget, really...
They're five oh one C three.
They're totally separate. They're as separate as, as Pirate Rec.
Yeah.
They're their own entity. They don't answer to the town for anything. They're not, not, you know, we don't elect them. We don't have any oversight, nothing. And then I thought, really, they're not any different than the food cupboard.
Right, I was just gonna say that, based on...
And the food cupboard does a good work, and I, I would say that the Historical Society does good work, and it's in our town. And then I thought about this comment, 'cause you had, you had shared it with me, I think, on the phone.
Yep.
And it seems to be, if, for whatever reason, we now don't even have the motivation to do our major fundraiser, maybe we, why would we, I mean, they obviously don't need money, or they would be doing the dinner. So I ju, I just...
Well, two fundraisers, because we was told after the last plant sale, they weren't doing that no more either.
Correct.
They're not doing anything.
No, they're not doing any fundraiser. Well, they're not doing any of the things they did before. I don't know what a few things they may do. But now, this is a different rationale. I thought, when we were told earlier that they weren't gonna do it, I thought it could be, and I get this from talking to my mother about the library, and they're, it's, people are getting older.
Sure.
It's harder to get people energized, but that's not what they're saying here. They're saying, we are deliberately not doing this fundraiser, something to do with changing the location. And we don't know what that means, but they made that choice.
Right.
So I just questioned why we would sign a blank check every year for eight hundred dollars.
Right.
I checked their hours, they are basically, they're open two hours a week.
Oh, is that right?
Every Tuesday, you can go in at one, and they'll close at three. We essentially are giving them sixteen dollars a week. That's what it amounts to, or eight dollars an hour.
But since, since the location has changed.
I have no idea what that means, but, so anyway, I wanted, I wanted to suggest that.
Yeah.
It doesn't seem like it's consistent with what we said to other groups who sought money.
Right, so you're gonna have to look at the library, then.
Well, the library performs a function.
True.
They, they are a library.
But they aren't a town library, unfortunately.
No, they're not, they're not. But, and every year, the town votes to continue to have a library. The food bank has a function, but I don't think it's specific to, and the Historical Society, I, I think Pirate Rec's a perfect example, because they do a lot that certainly engages the town. And they don't ask us for money. They, in fact, they give us money. It's, uh, it was, it's a little bit like learning that, that the, uh, the waste management thing with Dover Fosstrough. We have no representation, they just send us a bill. It's like, I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, we have no say.
None. Yeah, we would like you to do this, uh, well, we don't care.
Huh.
And I didn't know that.
Yeah. Well, it's a good point. I, I think it's a valid point, you know, if they're a five oh one C three...
Regular nonprofit, they're no different than a Pirate Rec or an ATV club.
The Masons.
ATV club.
They're like the Masons.
I mean, they're, they're just another organization within our community.
Their interest is historical.
There's no responsibility, liability to or from the town, I mean...
They actually have a mission statement.
Which, which... Two hours a week's kind of an interesting, I honestly have never been in the real...
Do they open it more in the summer?
Didn't say that on the website. It's, it's, it has this, Tuesdays, one to three. Every other day, it says close, close, close. "The society is pushed not only to promote history of the town, but also to make the community a better place." That's their mission statement. I think you could say the same thing of the food cupboard.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. I mean, as far as, as far as helping people in need in our town, or...
There certainly, there certainly is worthy.
Well, I wouldn't, I mean, I would say probably at the end of the day, the food cupboard provides a better benefit for a lot of our community members than the Historical Society has ever performed. I mean, I, I think it's important for the history of our town, and I'm not saying it's not, but...
The preservation of the history of the town.
Correct, but if you wanna put dollars to dollars, where's the bigger value for people within the community?
Right.
Is the food cupboard more important or more benefiting than this is?
Also, how labor intensive is it to run the Historical Society? I mean, what, what, how much is it cost?
Even if it's terribly labor intensive, they're only open two hours a week.
Right, and so basically, it's just maintaining the building. I mean, keeping, you know, the pipes, so they don't freeze.
Well, somebody, one of the members was in the mid-meeting, and she said that basically pays our water bill and our lights.
The utilities.
Yeah.
It supports the building.
Right.
And the food cupboard is in the church, in the UU church?
UU, yep. And I'm not saying that we should be supporting the food cupboard anymore, because there are other very worthy requests for money, but I'm not sure why they're any different.
Right.
I honestly think it needs to be a discussion item with them as well as the budget committee, because I know it was back when you and I was on the budget committee, a long time ago, that it was kinda determined then that there was, there was little pockets of money that was going out to all different places, and it was pretty well decided that wasn't the right thing to do, that we shouldn't give to individual organizations. So that's when, that's when that all stopped. I mean, that's when we stopped giving to the food cupboards and everything. For a while, they did do just the local food cupboard, and then that actually dropped off, because, as you said the other night, some people get offended, 'cause you're going here, instead of here.
Women should do mine as well.
It should be a choice, instead of a...
I mean, the Masons does great work. We don't give them any money, but they, they feed lots and lots of people.
They do, that's right.
The one thing I'd like to say is beware of the timing.
Hundred percent. I don't, I don't think I wanna make the change this year, but I would love it to be a discussion item.
Well, I'm inclined to at least cut them for what they would've made if they've been willing to do the dinner. For whatever reason, they just said, "We're not gonna bother."
I have no idea what they make.
Gotta be a couple hundred dollars.
Oh, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I know, you know, I have a piece of a sandwich and a brownie, and I throw in fifteen dollars.
Right.
And there's always some tens and twenties in there.
Right.
So if they can't even be bothered, actually, I, it's not get bothered, it's though...
It's because, but since, it says, but since...
Since you moved the location, we will not do it.
Yeah.
Well, okay, well, then, let's, let's go with six hundred. That's, I, you know, that's, I'm just kinda stream of consciousness thing.
Yeah.
I have no idea why the location would make them not need the money.
It would be nice to ask them. I mean, they wrote it, so we could ask them.
Well, as I said, I have to call Diana back and, after the meeting.
Yeah, ask, is there, is, what is, what is the problem, and you're...
What are we having our next meeting?
Well...
Do we know?
I thought you wanted to button this up today.
I would like to, but the auditor has told me that he can't have the short report till Monday or Tuesday.
Okay.
So if we don't button it up today, we have to button it up...
By then.
Saturday, Sunday, or Monday, probably.
Yep, that's fine.
And I think we do have some things to...
Sure.
Well, I, I mean, personally, with that written like that, to me, that's an untruth. The way I see it, from what I've been told, I just, when that didn't even go in the, it's not even my opinion, it wouldn't go in.
Why? I, I think it's good that people see what the position they've taken. I, I, I think it's, I think it is definitely a truth. They wrote it. They're sharing information with us that we didn't have.
Well, they're sharing different information than what they told us.
No, the story's evolved.
Correct.
Right, right.
Right, but originally, they told us before that they weren't doing it. Now, they're saying, not only are we not doing it, here's why we're not doing it. That's fine, that's their position. I have no idea what they mean, but it also, I, I think, if we decided to adjust this automatic eight hundred dollars for some reason, I think this is, is good justification. I, but I have no problem letting them come in and talk to us.
Right, so you're gonna speak with Diana, and, I mean, get to the bottom of it, 'cause sometimes there's a simple...
This one, I really appreciate their directness. There's no ambiguity here. The reason they're not doing it is because we changed the location.
Right, right.
They could do it. They've chosen not to.
Right.
So, okay, that's, it's a free country, and we all just now kind of accept that we have no say of this, of what these people do.
At the end of the day, it doesn't affect us, and it doesn't affect the town. I mean, it doesn't matter to us whether or not, they're the loss.
Yeah.
No, they chose to...
It's a hundred percent their loss.
It's their money they're not gonna get.
That's right, that's right.
And obviously, I mean, when you read the mission statement about the community, that was a kind of a social event, too, so that's no longer happening.
It had to be, one of the biggest fundraisers.
It was their biggest fundraiser.
So I, I guess, again, I beg the question, if I'm gonna reach out to taxpayers and say, "I would like you to give this organization money," it, I just, if, if that's the position they've taken, I'm less likely to wanna give their money.
So do they come into money, so they're doing better now than before, so they don't need to do these things?
That would be a, if that was the case, it makes sense.
Right.
It's like the library, they do a lot less fundraising, because they came into a bunch of money.
Right, right.
So, I get that.
Right.
The library, that was hard work. That was a hundred bucks here, a hundred bucks there, and you...
Well, and they were going to the gun shows and doing...
Went to the gun show once, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they were, but now they don't mean to.
Right.
And maybe the Historical Society got a, an endowment or some sort, but...
Maybe they did, that we don't know, but because they're a standalone...
But if that was the case, they didn't really need to, that almost seems critical.
Did they come up with that eight hundred number, or is that just the number we put down, 'cause it's what they've always asked for?
I have a request.
You do have a request?
Yep, it's just a, and it's gone up. Maybe it go up, I can tell you that. If I wear my glasses, I can tell you that.
The other question, just, and now you understand it's a Historical Society, but they get to go into our annual report.
Well, it was seven fifty last year.
It was seven fifty last year?
Yep. And then...
I mean, does the food cupboard want to put something in our annual, I mean...
No, I get it.
No, they did, they did.
That's why I was confused, because I thought they were a town entity.
I did, too.
That's on me.
Yeah, yeah.
If I can remember when it was, seven hundred, so it's gone up.
So it's gone up, they just incrementally have been increasing.
There you go. What she says. No, that's the, I have a copy. That's the revenues that I handed you. I've got it right here.
It's just, I'm back to this location change. It's hard to believe that it wouldn't be a more enjoyable meal versus sucking diesel fumes. If we, last year, we couldn't even turn the fire trucks off, because...
And it was so loud.
The chief felt it was so cold, they didn't wanna, yeah, it was loud.
Loud, and, you know, and, um, it's cold, and, um...
Well, they have a legitimate kitchen over there. I mean, it's a lot better setup than what we have here.
The parking's better over there, too.
Yeah, but I'm just looking at as far as the meal side.
So it's hard to figure out what the shortcoming is.
Right, right.
Two thousand fifteen was seven fifty to, um...
It was eight hundred last year.
Yeah, it was eight hundred last year. It was the first, it was the first year it gone up, but I do remember when it was...
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred, but...
Okay.
I've been around a long time, so...
Hardly. Okay, so it would be nice to...
I don't mind waiting on this until Monday or Tuesday, whatever we're gonna do.
And I'll have updated this, so you want more about everybody's involvement?
I, I don't know. I just, that was a thought. I'm not saying that's what I, I kinda wonder what everybody's thinking.
Because...
'Cause like, if you try to read it that way, like, you didn't know anything about what happened, and, and you...
Yep.
You know what I mean? It's just, the way you did it, everything is like really grouped together, which is great for us, because we know the numbers and the totals and...
It's, it's every...
I just, I was looking for a timeline.
Right.
But what I've left out of the timeline, you're right, is the, we had a workshop.
She's got them all here. What if you bullet pointed it with a date?
Yep.
You know, on this date, we did this. On this date, this contract given. Then on this date, the...
And bullet pointed back to a meeting and a reference point, that, you know, we had public input.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's the other piece that's very important, that this isn't just us getting us to where we're at.
Right, like, shut them...
We had the workshop, we had other people.
I was focused on, this needed to be done, because we were, we aren't just making it up, you know?
Correct.
We're not...
Well, and that's what I mean when it...
You know, we're just...
And I think you're just saying, and, and nor did we rush to this conclusion.
Hundred percent.
No.
'Cause when I first read it, it's like, this is awesome.
Yeah, that's the way I read it.
And then I can't, I don't know, I'm not the, for me to read something and actually get it into my head, I gotta read more than once. So when I read it the second time, it's like, oh, well, what if I didn't know? And it's like, yeah, just read this again slower. So then it was like, ooh, then it sounds really rushy, and, you know what I mean?
I always have to write something and then go back to it and go...
And tweak it, yeah.
Yeah, I think dates, dates, bullet points, I mean, you'd even, you'd even reference the meetings, you know, minutes.
Well, I mean, that workshop was keyfully important. I mean, we had a good public turnout.
'Cause we, we actually made a motion for you to go to Carpenter, didn't we?
No, we talked about it at the workshop, and...
I thought we...
Then we did talk about it.
They charged us, we had to give her the...
To go ahead and spend the money?
Yeah.
Yeah, we might have been in a meeting, because I, um, had talked to them and was all set to have them come down, and then they said, "Oh, by the way, it'll be..."
Right, we thought they would just come look like that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So we talked about it, and we talked about it in the group, and we talked about it in the workshop. Everybody agreed it was a good idea. Then you found out it was money, and we talked about it in the meeting.
And then we made a motion.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I didn't even have one little item was...
Yeah.
You know what I mean? That wasn't a, that wasn't a, yep, let's get it done. I mean, there was a lot of thought and conversation.
And this whole thing is gonna be that way.
Hundred percent.
And having, having this historical timeline is, will be good for us going forward. So it's just, it's, we'll just keep building on it. But, um, I, I think referencing the, um, uh, minutes and things like that, so people can listen to it if they wanna listen to what we...
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
'Cause they could, they can hear the discussion.
They can listen to this.
Yep.
Yep.
And then probably add another page to keep up.
Oh, no.
It's all right, because, one, it's only sixty-three bucks for the colored page, and two, last year, we had an extra colored page, because Charlie's memory and the dedication to Alvina were on different pages, and so they counted as two pages, and we aren't gonna have that this year, so...
Good.
At the end of the day...
Yeah, really.
We just need a nice report.
That's right.
Besides which, the cover on both sides is, we, we pay for color, so we can...
One thing, actually, writing, actually, I, I just came into my brain, um, is it on the back phone numbers? I know we're jumping around here. One number that wasn't on here, that Rick had said to me, he said, "The hospital's not on here." Five, six, four, eight, four oh one.
Four oh one.
I mean, not that anybody's gonna look on the back of a annual report.
They'll just dial nine one ones.
It's surprising how many people hang on to those, those stuff like that.
Yeah, so, I mean...
Well, when I discovered the superintendent's number was on here, I'm always looking for the superintendent's number.
Yeah, yeah. So...
I mean, I know, I know the school's number, but I don't know the...
Yeah.
And what else?
I mean, if there's one, I wouldn't change the format in any way.
I think there's plenty of... Plenty of room. We didn't, we didn't get some of the letters this year.
And we should make sure, actually, that those are all current, you know, like...
I haven't actually checked all of these.
Anyway, that, that's mine, I'm mine, I'm mine.
Well, I'd like to get it right.
Well, yes, yes. ATV club, Sue McElway, is she the...
Yep, yep.
Oh, post office is on here. Okay, this is wrong.
Sangerville Road Commissioner is not Seth Elderkin.
Sure it is.
You try, Bridget.
Call Seth.
Okay, Josh, okay.
I'll look at this while we're...
Okay.
Really, everything is just verbatim, right? What's the, uh, as far as warrant articles?
Well, let's go...
I was looking for the couple that...
Okay, so, let's just go down through the warrant articles. Monitor invocation article, two, three, okay, article four, to elect one selectman and to set the stipend. To elect, whoops.
Okay, where, where...
Article four.
I know, where's, where's mine?
Oh, do I have yours?
I don't know if there was a copy. I can make another one.
Well, wait a minute, I have a lot of big stack. Do I have more than one?
I just have one.
Maybe I have two.
Or I, maybe...
No, I don't know.
Oh, I probably took the right.
She already took care of it.
She took care of it.
I followed it.
Got a piece of sauce on it.
Too organized. Okay, we're gonna elect one school committee member for three years and one for a two-year term. I have not approached anybody, but, um, that is...
Who's our opening this year?
Keith Guile?
Yeah.
Yes. You think he'll stay on?
I think so, 'cause I think he does enjoy it, from what, from what Danny tells him.
Good, so we're still, we're just looking for another one, then?
Yeah, he's on the budget committee. I do know that.
Wow.
So I'm hoping he stays on. He seems to be, from what she says, he just seems to do a really good job for us.
Oh, good. And then, to elect one sanitary district trustee for a three-year term. This has been an issue. The water district is appointed, and they have six-year terms. The sanitary district, we elect, and they have three-year terms. Somewhere along the line, somebody got confused, and for three years running, we elected a sanitary member for six years instead of three.
Oh, jeez, oh, boy.
But Frank and I basically said, "Yeah, one term is up this year. We're just gonna fill it like usual and keep on moving."
Move forward.
'Cause it's, but...
Yeah, okay.
Just in case anybody wanted to know. Um, I think I've changed all the dates, and you guys should really look it over, because all the dates...[1674.16]
Yep.
And I put Forty Doughty Hill Road identifying where Grace Bible is in case anybody doesn't know, up, up in the greeting. Um, article five, the maximum allowed is nine percent per title three, thirty-six, I verified that. This year it is, the maximum is still nine, I haven't changed, whoops, I missed that, it's a two thousand twenty that goes in there. And August thirty-first is an actual.
Two thousand twenty.
Week, yeah.
Is that an actual?
It's an actual weekday, so I verified that.
Yeah, that's true.
Um.
That's been in the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, to authorize prepayment of real estate, that's all, to see in accordance, April twentieth, whoever owns it is um. And I left the five percent, I didn't check any. I didn't check to see who sets that, but we, but we have a five percent on article seven.
Mm-hmm.
July thirty-first.
Is a Friday. I actually had to check that one.
Same deal, I heard on the air.
Yep, um. Okay, to see the, article eleven, that's supposed to be January twenty-first to twenty-first annual town meeting.
Nine and ten are exactly as per last year?
Yeah.
Okay, and there's no dates in those, so we're on eleven, okay?
Eleven.
Article nine.
Article nine, to see if there's something else, yes.
I don't wanna do this this year, cause we don't have time, but I'd like to earmark that, cause there's something to work on next year. Because I really do not think that it is the best interest for our town to put the money in perpetual care trust fund.
Cause we can't get back, we apparently can't get it out, yeah.
No, there's something, it's, our understanding of it or its current configuration is wrong.
Correct.
There's just no way that it's supposed to be wrong, the way that we're treating.
Right.
But I can tell you that if you do away with perpetual care, you're gonna see some people say, no, 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 but they don't understand. The mess we got, with, what we have right now, it's just not.
That, that's what I'm saying, we don't have enough time to get to where we need to be to have a conversation.
No, I.
But that's something to work on.
That we need to work on this, next year.
I've gotta do a whole policy for the cemeteries and so we can address it all.
Hundred percent, it's just, we really need to understand how much money is there, how much is.
Even if we start new.
How can you use it?
On a new, right, right.
Well, and I, like I said, I mean, obviously, we need to.
Right, stop this.
Instead of having this, why can't we just have a reserve account for our cemetery, cemetery reserve? And you put your money into that, then you can take it out and use it if you need to.
Or you can use it to fund, perpetual care is truly the mowing and brush cutting of the cemetery.
I know that, but everybody's thinking, that's what they're putting the money there for, and then that money will never, ever pay to mow the grass one year.
Right, correct.
Not unless we figure a way to change the rules.
That's what I'm saying, so that's why, I just, we don't need to get, I just wanted to make sure.
That's fine.
We need to, next year, that needs to be a goal.
That's good, yes.
Okay. Article twelve is donations, um, article thirteen, to apply for and accept grants, yep, to see the town hall. Dog ordinance, plumbing permits, no mobile, that's the right amount, I checked that, um. Again, July thirty-first is a Friday, so that should be okay, and article seventeen, alright, I haven't changed article. Eighteen to the right amounts yet, mostly cause I'm not sure on, I gotta talk to Josh about Homestead.
Yeah, that's gonna be interesting.
And what's that, it's gonna look like.
So these are last year's numbers?
Those are last year's numbers, um. Nineteen is contingency, um, do I need to put in there? Um, approved by the budget and the budget committee and the.
Oh, I would do that on every one of them.
It, it isn't, it isn't in there for some reason.
No, I would definitely.
Okay, and I don't know if I accidentally deleted it or.
Did the budget committee talk about that?
Yes, oh, yeah, cause Lance didn't want us to have it, but.
Gotcha, I, yes.
He just supports overdrafts that you fight for, but we're actually, I believe, we're actually liable.
That's why you don't see overdrafts.
So.
You're not, you're not liable for.
Right.
Right.
At least you got a little wiggle.
Yeah, 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 I do remember that guy.
Okay, when we did article twenty, that's not my. That, two sixty-five includes the fifteen thousand for that next article. So we should, so do you want it in two articles, that's what I wanted to confirm is, we take the, um. Town hall renovation and engineering and contracting.
Oh, no, if you could leave that under one, why not, we don't need it split, right?
We don't have to, we never have.
But you have to subtract it then from the two sixty-five?
If we have two articles, I have to subtract it from the two sixty-five, if we leave it, we bundle it. Because it's part of government and we always bundle government, then it's.
I wouldn't separate it, I would leave it under the two sixty-five and if it turns into a discussion item, then we can discuss it then.
Okay.
I don't know, do you want that, what do you think?
So you're saying take twenty-one, two, twenty-one out completely?
Yeah.
And just leave it in.
It's already, it's part of.
The general government.
Any other, that would be, wouldn't be a part of anything differently.
Yeah, it's, it's only a division in the Department of General, of General Government, and that's, we always do a general government is this much and.
Though part of that.
Yeah.
I mean.
Again, is this what we did last year, is this?
This is new, we have never put fifteen thousand in, and we put it in because we're going to have some engineering and contracting costs to get. Numbers.
But in years past, when we had money in that line item, it was part of line twenty.
True.
It wasn't.
It always, yeah, it, it has been used before, apparently.
So it'll be.
Cause I didn't add it to the trio, I didn't add it.
It's already in the two sixty-five.
Yeah, so it's.
But it, so it'll be acknowledged somewhere, but not as an individual article, is that what you're saying?
Unless they look, they have to look.
It's a line, you have to look, it's in the budget.
Look at the budget.
If you go through the budget, it's in that group, it's in that section under the two sixty-five.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not a separate own.
Okay.
Right.
So it's just like all the other lines that link up to two sixty-five.
So there's no need.
That's what I'm saying.
So it doesn't need to, it's only individual article.
So that goes away.
Yep.
Um, okay, and I just, I think that, that, well, I guess it's not gonna matter, but to me, it should, should be town hall, engineering and contracting.
Right, take renovation.
Yeah, cause that's, that implies something that we don't really know.
Yeah, okay, so that would actually, it didn't exist for, is why it's.
And you said the titles you could change.
I believe I can change that with no problem.
Okay, that would be good.
So what happens when the, uh, the citizen raises their hand and says, well, what's in this two sixty-five?
Then they have to look at the budget.
Okay.
They have to look at the budget.
I see. You'd be looking at all the line items within that, and if we have to go through them all, we'll have to go through them all, but.
Right, right, but there's no need to, to pull one out and.
No, I mean, it's no different than the line item that's on there.
They wanted to address one particular item, they could do that.
Hundred percent.
During the discussion of this article.
Yeah, and then they could lower it.
I mean, you got the line item for new equipment or upgraded equipment.
This makes it look like it's a double dip.
Right, right, exactly.
It's an add-on to that.
Yeah, and something new, I mean, it's, it's.
In all likelihood, two sixty-five is less than you budgeted last year, so in all likelihood, nobody's going to say.
What line is that, Bridget, that, that article twenty-one, that fifteen, where is that, just?
Eighty-one.
Okay, eighty-one. Okay.
Okay, so fire department's at fifty-five, ammo welfare stayed the same. Then we go to hydrants, I, I hadn't talked to the water district other than to see if I could get their reports. Um, there is some speculation that at some point they're going to go up on their prices. But we still have a little bit of legal room in there and, and it's likely if they do, it'll be at our six-month mark instead of a full. A full year, um.
Excuse me.
Hi, yes.
Speak to you for just one second, please, I know you're writing a meeting report.
Certainly, they're reading something, hold right on.
Should we suspend, just take?
Yeah, you wanna take a recess, yeah, alright, we will, it is five after one second, we are in favor. If I can pause. Okay, uh, we're gonna come out of our recess and it's, uh, ten after one, and we're back in session. Where were we?
We were looking at, we've gone through, we're at hydrants, so.
Oh, there you go.
So the next one is the library. And again, I'll just reiterate, I don't know if you have the same reservations about that as you do historical society. Alright, article twenty-six is public works. That's a big increase, but that's because you put all the road work into the actual budget line.
Yeah. Did we? Did we wanna take a portion of that and bring it out of, uh, reserves as opposed to making it part of the budget?
You wanna go through this, we'll talk about that after, I'm fully agree, but I just, we gotta figure out where we would. You, would we, we would put that towards the end anyway, if it was going to.
Cause what'd you have, like three hundred thousand paving?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you put in a hundred fifty last.
Do a hundred and fifty, and then take another two or something like that, we've done that two or three years in a row.
Actually, though, would it be better to put, if we was gonna have that, we wanna put that article right there with it.
I agree, definitely, just separate the. But the way that it's worded right now, it's, it's gonna be part of your mill rate.
Correct.
And we don't want.
We don't want the whole thing to be part of it, people have already paid to pave these roads.
Right, right.
Right, but what you would have to do is, you would have to leave it like that, and then the following line would be, you wanna take X amount.
Oh. Or, can, can you do it within that article, say, X from reserves and X?
Well, I'm thinking, when we do it during a special, it wasn't part of the total number, we come back to them in July and we say, we wanna take two hundred out of reserves, and that works.
Because you asked for it specifically.
But, so can we ask for it specifically out of the reserves? Just like you would in July.
You could reduce this number by a hundred and fifty thousand.
Correct.
And then in the next line, ask for a hundred and fifty thousand out of reserves to pay for, to pay. The only thing about doing that is, if they don't let you take that reserve, you're not gonna do it, whereas.
Correct, but, which you wouldn't if they didn't go for it in July either.
At the end of the day, so you're doing the same thing, it's just wording it two different ways.
Right, and we're not.
Leave it all here and, no, but I'm just saying, you could leave the five ninety-one here, and then the very next line, say. Do you approve to take the hundred and fifty thousand out of reserves to pay for a hundred and fifty thousand paving?
But if they say no, you're still committed to the five fifty-one, correct, and it's all gonna be on the mill rate, which we don't want. If they don't wanna take the money out of reserves, we're not gonna do it.
So one hundred and fifty minus a hundred and fifty.
I would say at least a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Well, I, we don't know where we even at before we say that.
Yeah, we've got to.
I don't know where your total number is, where are we at today compared to where we was a year ago today?
In terms of fund balance, in terms of cash flow, in terms of.
Both.
Cash flow.
I mean, if I look at the big picture, a year ago today, and we was at nine hundred thousand, are we at nine hundred thousand today, or are we at eight, or are we at a minute? You know what I mean?
Yeah, um, I gotta check both numbers.
That's an important number.
Because that will tell me if I wanna go two, I might wanna go three.
Yeah.
And I might only wanna do a hundred.
We may not wanna talk about it.
Cash flow is slightly ahead of where it was last year, but I'm not.
But to me, I don't care about breaking it out, cause at the end of the day, it's one big number. How big is the bucket, well, how much is in the bucket?
I was hoping I'd have the audit to make sure that I.
Yep.
Okay.
Cause especially knowing what we did in, if you look at it today, to a year ago today, you, we all know that we took, what, two? Or what did we take out in June?
Oh.
Two fifteen?
Hundred and fifteen.
Hundred fifteen.
Hundred fifteen?
Yeah.
So we took a hundred and fifteen out.
Yeah.
In June.
Right.
So if we still, if we're at about the same place we are today.
Yeah.
We could do a little more.
Yeah.
Do a little more, sure. That's all.
And, and I think we're gonna have plenty of road prepped, I think we're gonna have more road prepped than we wanna pave.
I think you're right.
Which is a good position.
Be ahead of ourselves.
Yeah, cause I mean, the goal is to get the rest of it prepped.
Right.
Right.
Great.
I mean, we need that all prepped so that we can do the same thing in the next year.
Keep going, yeah.
So. So, yeah, if you wanna.
We'll have that.
That's one we gotta work on.
But as far as when you're doing, redoing your articles, just write that in there.
Yep.
Cause honestly, if it's only fifty, it's fifty, but whatever we think we can take, we oughta take.
I agree, cause it's gonna effectively lower your mill rate.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, uh, monument lot is down to six, we discussed that, we left, you know, so welfare at five. Parks and Rec, alright, I get to make that nine oh six, cause I left, I left that in there and they never did bother to change it, but.
Who?
The budget committee, remember, we spoke up at the meeting the other night, they never voted on it.
They're just advising us anyway, oh, but what they.
But their number was different.
And then you wanna say, oh, we disagreed over six bucks, I don't think we wanna say that.
So what do we have to do, what do you have to do?
I'm just gonna make it nine oh six and.
Oh.
Ignore it. The cemeteries.
Details.
No, it has nothing to do with the six, it's the principle, we're never gonna increase the budget, and Mike's standing there. If you build a gazebo or if you make a field, you're gonna increase, you need more money, no, we won't, okay, we're never gonna give you over nine. They just got it.
Well, you can have an emergency budget meeting.
Alright, um, the historical society, are, we've discussed that, are, are we making it any kind of decision?
Well, um, is this something we wanna address later, or do you wanna address it now?
I don't know. I don't wanna address it.
Okay, so.
Okay, so then capital outlay, I didn't change article thirty-three, um.
I think that could, should be earmarked, just like we got on perpetual care.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
That'd be something that we really need.
That we wanna dig into.
Need to dig into.
At the end of the day, we'll take a vote.
Yep. Well, then, somebody can stand up and lower the number too, to the historical society.
Yeah, well, as I said, I'm not married to eight yet.
Well, let's see.
So if you, if you wanna wait, wait till Monday or Tuesday when we get together, that's fine with me.
We can leave article thirty-three alone because, um. Before, they're not gonna cut anything this year that I know of, I mean, they haven't even met, um, so.
That'd be another earmark candidate, I'd like to have that conversation about all that property sometime.
Well, you can have it with my husband.
I would love to, well, have it with anybody, cause I think it's ridiculous that we sit on this property forever and you're not making it now.
You know, I, I have a client who owns tens of thousands of acres in Washington County, and, um. He started doing these large solar fields.
Oh.
Now, he, he got in, he, he's a logger originally, got into blueberries, and so he would, what, he, he found that acreage was actually worth a lot more money. As a blueberry field than it was as a timber field, so he put his guys to work clearing these, you know, he'd log them, and then he'd turn them into blueberry barrens. And now he's found out that they could be worth even more money as solar panel fields, and he's, I'm not talking these little ten acre yards.
No, 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 yeah, yeah.
Jim Brown, he's talking fifty, eighty, hundred acre. Uh, and they work, they, they generate money for him a, as the landowner, uh, like an oil well.
And he sells it to.
No, 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 you don't sell it.
It's, a contractor comes in and they utilize your space.
The lease, basically, yeah.
Oh, so he has nothing to do with the solar arrays, per se.
And like I said, it's like an oil well, he just gets a check every month.
Oh.
And I said, well, why wouldn't this work for a community, and he said, it would, you, you need the right sort of land, facing in the right direction.
Yeah, yeah.
And you need the right sort of electrical lines, it needs to be three-phase.
Yeah.
If you're close to a three-phase line.
Problem.
Yeah.
And, and do we have any here?
No.
Don't, don't, uh, alright, he's.
Just out upon a lumber.
She's the end of the line.
Okay. Cuz that piece of property that's near my house is oriented perfectly. And that's, I don't know if that's.
That's why the whole conversation come up about. Is because of that, which is exactly what you're saying, I mean, right now, there's a big push, there's all kinds of government money to do this. That's how everybody's making the money, it's, it's not that.
So is this, this is not cleared, it would have to be logged?
Yeah, yeah, they, they, it has to be level, somewhat level, I mean, cuz you had, these panels are all. But it, it's, it's interesting.
It is interesting.
I mean, if you thought, you know, you get up like on the gray road and some of those big old fields up there. I mean, we don't own them. There's places in this county where this would work.
Yeah, but to me, not even that, I mean, you, you're not generating, that's, that's a good plan, but what about. Self letting out some of these and splitting it up, leasing out acre lots. Hunting plots, I mean, there's all kinds of things you could do. I know right now it's public access, but. You know, why couldn't you do something? We, we're never gonna make any, we're never gonna generate any income as far as before.
Everybody tells me.
They did. That's where your fifty thousand came from that you put into the town.
But that's what I'm saying, it's fifty thousand in what, every forty years?
Biomass is over.
How many acres is this? That we're talking about?
There's two different plots, and I can't remember the total. Actually, I think it's more than that, because the piece I used actually two plots. Two pieces to that, and there's, I think the one over and. The other piece is all one plot.
But I, whenever it comes, I, I'm told, oh, no, you're not allowed, it's not even legal to sell it, or, so I don't know if that's true. Kinda reminds me of perpetual care, it's like, well, you put the money in, it can never get out.
Well, I'm lying, you just gotta look up the deed and read it, I mean, it'll tell you, read in there what you can and can't do.
Read the deed, yeah.
I don't know, I read the one for Gelford, there just says, theirs is limited, you can't, uh, limit recreational access. I never read this one, but.
This one, I don't think you can sell it. Lease it.
That's what I'm saying, but, I don't know.
File in my file cabinet, because they did research it, they went as far as trying to get Congress to. Release them and let them sell it way back when they first.
These old Second World War grants.
I, I just think there's money there that could be available for the town if we actually utilize land or something.
Probably.
There ain't a lot of buckets left for money for a town, so I'm really starting to dig a little deep to try to come up with something.
Well, this is hundreds of acres of land. I mean, if you can do something with it, we oughta know what's available, if you can't do anything, we should know that.
Can't get rid of it. Alright, um. That's what, I've highlighted article thirty five because that's what we just talked about, whether or not we're separating. Out a certain amount of money, I just didn't take it out.
Okay, you're gonna move that to right under the other article?
Correct, yeah, and I just highlighted it in mine so that I'd know that it was something I needed to. Work on. See if the municipal officers dispose of town or property, that's the same.
How much left is there?
Yeah, it's quite a bit.
Well.
What?
Think about it this way, I mean, there's half dozen chainsaws up there.
Over five thousand is not much left. Just, I mean, that's all over.
But that's what I'm saying, he was left the bulldozer, and there's no intention of playing with that.
I'll have to talk to maybe the sanitary district about the. Cutter, we never did finalize.
Yeah, I, I, I think there's a lot of stuff up there that, you know.
Should be sold before it just gets old and. I mean, I remember Seth made a very fair offer on that saw. And, I mean, it's running right now.
He's did, but sanitary made us better off.
Whoever wants it.
But the other thing too is, you know, a lot of the stuff is sitting around, we all know small ones just don't like it.
Well, and when we got it out this summer. Frank had to fiddle with it.
Makes no sense.
But I mean, there's, there's brush saws, there's all kinds of things up there. Do they even work?
Who knows with the ethanol?
There's a lot of small tools, there's, there's just a lot of stuff up there that. You probably don't really need to have.
Okay, article thirty seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to sign a three-year contract. For roadside mowing for the years twenty twenty one through twenty twenty three with a non-appropriation clause included. Basically, nobody got back to me more than saying that. The contract should have a non-appropriation clause, whether you need to put that in here. Back when you did the plowing contract, all it said was.
Yeah, I think that needs to be there. But they weren't only doing that because that one guy says he'll give us a. Better on a three year.
And if he doesn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't sign a con- contract.
I understand it, but you oughta somehow parentheses.
You want the parentheses.
Well, if you could put parentheses in whatever that three-year savings would be. Cuz that's what everybody's gonna ask you.
That's a good point, I like that.
If you're not gonna save any money.
It would, it would hold the price for three years.
That's what I would put then.
Because I don't, other than that, I don't know because.
Then that's what I would actually, that's what you know, that's what I would write, and then that way there, you can't get taken out of tax. Which is not what you wanna do.
Now, take out the non-appropriation, that's just something for me to do when we sign the contract.
When everything escalates, anytime we can go three years, lock in, even if it's lock in at the same level, it's a good thing.
Okay, so, the next article, and I didn't put a number because we have to decide where we want this. Um, to discuss what action the town will consider as a result of the current structural condition of the town hall. Um, that I believe is your.
My suggestion.
Yeah, I took out if any cuz, um. We're not actually taking an action, we're just discussing an action. Because we don't want anybody to take an action. I've got it here.
I don't remember the word action even being in there.
To discuss the town, oh, no.
Okay, so here's. Um, I sent something rather wordy and then. And Richard Fowelling sent back to me, he felt the simplest wording would be to see what action the town will take. If any regarding the current structural condition of the town hall. So then, Mike said to, to see what, um. He would prefer to discuss what actions the town will consider. As a result of the current structural condition of the town hall.
So that was what Mike said?
And then he said, you could omit if any, and I figured, yeah, we could, it's definitely.
Cuz something's gonna happen.
We're not taking an action anymore, so it doesn't, doesn't apply.
And it's clearly a discussion, not, because that one that he sent us, it almost sounded like. We're gonna vote to take this path.
And I think that's what he was talking about.
Yeah, that's, we're premature for that. But what will happen, I suspect is this discussion is going to, okay, so what are the, what variables are there? What could we consider? And that's where, you know, it's gonna become clear to everybody that. We're considering building a brand new building. At, at some location, someplace. Or rehabbing a building, or, we're not necessarily completely married to this hundred twenty-year-old theater. And that will be an interesting discussion. And we've got a lot of figures as to why we've arrived at this position, but that's what we're considering.
Do you want? Some of those figures in the condition of the town hall piece, or wait for the discussion?
They're gonna have them in your letter.
They will have all of that info. It's gonna be in their report.
The letter, you're writing what the status?
No, right, sorry, those numbers, but you're talking about.
I'm talking, not a new building, but.
So what are you talking about?
I'm talking about the four hundred and fifteen thousand in the past thirty years you've put in.
I would almost put.
I don't, well, that's gonna, we're gonna have that. We'd be armed with that.
Yeah, we're armed with that, do we want them to be forewarned?
Part of the letter, the end.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't think that's a bad thing. Kind of a expense history.
I don't, I just, this is wordy and it's lengthy, and I don't like the word action in there.
Okay.
Cuz really, all we're doing.
But there, but are they voting, what, so what is this, no, 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 but are they voting to have the discussion?
That's right, we're not even gonna, we're going right to the next one.
To.
To see if the town.
Will wishes to discuss or will discuss.
Will discuss. Cuz if you don't get a.
Right.
You don't get a second. If it doesn't pass, it's not gonna discuss.
To, so to. See if the town.
Well, it's like, the question, the article is that question, if they vote no, we do not discuss it. Just like above, to see if the town will vote to authorize this selection, if they vote no, they didn't authorize.
Right, so to see if the town will vote to. Vote to discuss.
Open a discussion.
Open discussion. Of the status of the town hall? And you can take it that way any direction you want to, I mean, you're, you can discuss the building, I mean, we're. Town office, however you wanna word it, but then it can go. Old building, new building, whatever.
I think it's important to get the, the, the whole. Uh, genesis of this is its current structural condition. That's why this.
Well, we can leave that there too.
Yes, yes.
But I like the, to see if the town.
Right, will.
Discuss.
To see if the town will open a discussion. Of the current structural.
Regarding.
That's perfect.
To see if the town will open a discussion regarding the current structural condition of the town.
That is painless.
Okay, and where are we putting it?
I don't mind this location near the end.
No, I think I.
Could even make it dead last.
Yeah, we could, because then people, you know.
And make them sit.
Well, plus, I mean, this is very open-ended discussion, we're gonna wanna go home eventually.
Well, and that's, but the other part of it is, is it's gonna expedite everything to get to it.
Yeah, yeah, you don't wanna have an hour and a half discussion.
Advantage to get out of there, you know you're gonna be there on this one, so let's get through the whole goddamn thing.
Right.
That makes sense, so. That'd be forty one or two, okay. Well, it's recording, okay. So, next article. I didn't know what we wanted to do with this, I wrote down, to see if the town will vote to rescind the part of article fifty two from the two thousand fifteen. Town warrant that says, and to repay the town's undesignated reserve account in ten annual payments of six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Beginning in two thousand fifteen. The entire article reads, to see if the town will vote to authorize municipal officers to borrow from the town's undesignated reserve account, a sum of money. Not to exceed sixty eight thousand five hundred to make necessary repairs, renovations and replacements in the town hall. For exterior work, modifications to the records room, partially insulate the basement, install new carpeting. Repair the front door and install two heat pumps, and to repay the town's undesignated reserve in ten annual payments. So. This was the recommendation of MMA that you, um. Rescind. The part of, I mean, you can't rescind the fact that they, what they approved, cuz we've already spent. The money, you just rescind the repayment. And then the next article, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and appropriate for debt service not to exceed sixty one one. Ten, um. They had sixty eight five in there, they didn't pass that amount of, um, work, they.
Passed sixty one one.
They passed sixty one one. Um, so I don't think you can do the sixty eight still, um. Seventy four hundred was for carpeting for the town hall, and they didn't pass that.
But this article, uh, the, for the sixty one one. That's, that's in there every year.
Well, it's supposed to have been, it's in there some years.
So some years we didn't collect it. The only way you ever collect it is if you have an article requesting. So if we don't have an article for sixty one one, haven't we effectively done away with it?
But you have to have a town vote to rescind.
Well, I, I think to prove that that's not the case, because we've done it two or three times.
But it's still out there, hanging out there, that our liability.
But that's, when I talked to Bridie about this, he basically said, that's the issue, there is no one that can come in and say you have to pay that. Cuz it's not like a bank.
But the town voted, that's the problem, that's why he's saying, you have to have a town vote.
There is no debtor.
So there's no one to, there's no one that can claim.
But why did he say we had to have a town vote?
He said, if. Your undesignated reserve is okay. If it were not okay and you needed money, he'd recommend that you keep doing this.
Sure, hundred percent, we wouldn't have this.
Right, we wouldn't have this conversation. On the other hand, if the town's undesignated reserve account is now in good shape, you can either, one, simply continue admitting annual repayments for the warrant.
Omitting.
Don't ask, I don't need it.
Or two, include an article in the two thousand twenty annual warrant explicitly amending. Article fifty two is approved at the March twenty eighth, two thousand fifteen annual town meeting by rescinding the vote. To repay the town's undesignated reserve account. So if you rescind it.
It goes away forever. If you leave, if you omit it, and any year going forward, you can.
Two new people, they could put that back in there, cuz then they got rescinded.
And then, or if the town needed the money, they can begin to collect it again.
So split the baby in half. Rescind it and don't ask.
Right, that, rescind it, get rid of it completely.
But wasn't they going yes or no to rescind? We still don't ask.
Well, once you rescind it.
True, there you go, for this year at least.
We don't want it.
That's right, we don't need it.
We already got the money.
Yes, they don't rescind it, you have to have it in there, don't you?
I mean, there's no.
There's separate steps. Once it's rescinded, Dale's absolutely right, no future board can come back and ask. But as long as you got two of us here, we never have to ask for the sixty one one, ever. He says that.
He didn't say and.
No, he said or.
He said or.
He did.
Yeah, well, we can do either one.
That's right.
But or is the key here. That's what I'm saying.
I don't think we have to ask for this money.
No, I don't think so either.
So just rescind it, see what happens.
If we rescind it, it's gone, it's.
Then you can't ask for it.
And I would put on there. Underneath that, recommended by the budget committee and the board.
I agree, I totally agree.
Because they were a hundred percent, we didn't do this, cuz actually. Or the other night, I was hearing and.
Okay, and I was hearing from everybody that we should do. Both to make it abundantly clear.
The way you read that, I thought it was both.
If you rescind it, you would, it would say in parentheses. You don't act on this if article, the previous seating article.
What he's saying is, we don't even have to rescind it. We don't have to do that, we just don't have to pay it.
Correct.
Oh, true. You can do nothing, and then somebody's gonna say you're covering something up.
We just didn't ask, we didn't, we're, we're not spending money, we're not, we're not taxing them again. And if they rescind it, then, then no one can ever bring it back.
That's a hundred percent.
But whether they rescind or not, we still don't.
So I'm getting rid of. The second.
Yeah, goes away completely.
Cuz he would sum the money the town will raise to appropriate for debt services.
Is when we have what's in the bucket. Because that's really what's driving this. If the bucket's got nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars in it, why do we need to tax these people sixty one hundred dollars?
You're not talking me out of this, I'm with you, I just wanna make sure all of us. With the and or the or, that's the confusion.
And we understand exactly what.
Well, you don't ask for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for payment, if you're worried about, cuz you gotta repay yourself six thousand.
Exactly right.
That's right.
And we've repeatedly done it, so.
Okay, next article, see if the town will vote to accept any funds from the Millard and Marjorie Smart Trust Fund to defray school expenses for the town. Um, we, I talked about this with Sue Pilgrim, I sent in a week and a half ago. To see if she approved the language, they didn't send it to her, cuz they thought, well, she and I had talked previously, it was a done. Deal, and I've, so I've gotten, she was in a meeting all day today, and I couldn't get her.
I would move that one after the next one. I'll put them in a different order. The only reason why I say that is when this next one comes up.
Which next one now, the next one, the very last one?
To see if the town will vote to establish a reserve fund using the thirty five thousand eight hundred ninety nine dollars and sixty three cents donated by the Stock Flanders. American Legion Post called the Stock Flanders American Legion Fund. Or cash reserve, I guess I should put.
Can we just regain the current one we have?
To be utilized at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of maintaining Sangerville's Memorial Lot and the Sangerville Veterans Memorial Park. So basically, they have given me a letter, she recommended that, so that we can hold on to the funds until now. They really wanted to, to do. Some sort of civic duty with it, they want something done to the monument lot, um.
What are they saying, what?
They want it for them, they want, um. Beautification of the monument lot, they want some stonework.
Don't we, yeah, I say, we need specifics, if they want, if they're encumbrances, we need to know what they are.
That's the problem, and that's how it needs to be voted in to be accepted.
If they want twelve hundred dollars worth of stonework, it should say that, if, I mean, whatever they. It can't be some stonework, I don't think.
I, yeah, because, I mean.
I mean, otherwise, we could do a hundred dollars worth of stonework, I mean, we need, we, whatever is required of the town. In order to take this, we need to be able to explain that to the town.
And every time I talk to them, well, we'd like this, this and this, but if they decide not to do it, that's fine.
That's different.
Put it as an encumbrance then, because that's not really what they're doing, I mean, they're saying, well, this is, this is a, pretty pleased, but I don't care if you do.
Right, that's very different.
Hundred percent, and the other thing is, is they're referencing two different account places. So do they want that fifty fifty split, I mean, what are they kinda thinking?
It's up to your discretion.
I can tell you, my own opinion is I would simplify it, I would just say, okay. Instead of creating a new legion fund, I would just take the thirty five thousand and throw it in the monument lot fund, and we would never fund that again.
I agree with Dale.
I would put that money right there, it would be.
And it can only be used on the monuments?
It would always be there, we would never take a taxpayer dollar.
Is it too much?
It's a lot of money.
It's not a lot of money if you're gonna do stonework.
If you're gonna do some stonework.
Oh, you go, I mean, if you put a granite stone.
Or if you ever moved it, there was, I mean, I don't.
Do they add names to that monument?
It's, I think, two hundred and fifty.
It seems like a lot of money, but I guess.
But for a lifetime.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, many lifetimes. It's their money. And like I said, even if you had some catastrophe, maybe you, for some reason you had to move it, you probably would have enough money to move it. And like I said, even if you had some catastrophe, maybe you, for some reason you had to move it, you probably would have enough money to move it.
And who knows, I mean, in this day and age, you never know, anything could happen up there, if there was graffiti on the stone, or something happened. One of those shifts and cracks, or, I mean.
Someone steals the stone.
Anything is possible, there, thirty five thousand dollars could be pretty easily spent nowadays. I mean, you wouldn't spend, if you had to go up there and reset them stones and hire a contractor to go in, you know what I mean, you could spend a few thousand dollars, pretty easy.
Yeah.
But.
A, a portion thereof, they, I mean, they've given it.
I mean, you oughta, you oughta just ask that, because it was.
Either, yeah, either, either they, it has to be carped launch, or they have to designate. What, exactly, because no matter, it's, we don't want any.
Here's my problem, I've got three men talking to me. Ed Grant wants to make sure that there's stonework down on the memo.
I, no specificity as to what he wants.
Well, he talked to Rob Haley, but Rob never got back to him, so he has no numbers.
Right.
No spec- no specifics. Ron Smith would like that my all to go to the memorial park. And Brad Ellis would like, um.
Yeah.
Would like more, um. As long as we spend it on civic kinds of, um.
So they need.
He wants to see the money do some good.
They, they, but they're treating it like it's an opinion, like my opinion is this, well, my opinion is this.
Yeah.
They need to have a chip, oh, I mean.
Yeah, I think I had to decide.
They don't exist anymore.
I. So if, if, as long as the language is at the discretion of the select board.
I would call.
Safe.
Yeah. I would actually just tell them, you know.
And it's the monument and the park.
As far as, I would not just put them, I mean, either that, or I would split it in half, you wanna do that?
I'm there.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
But.
Oh, put it in the wrecking park reserve and put it in the monument reserve.
Yep.
It just gets sketchy when you go to the other one, if you put it in that monument lot, you always know what it's gonna be for.
Well, I was kinda thinking, I was thinking things like, um. Flag markers and, and things that you're gonna need in the cemeteries would also be.
There's no reason why you can't take that money out of the monument lot.
Mm, mm, mm.
You don't, you don't have to just think of that boundary.
As long as we have discretion, we pretty much can do what we want. That's why.
Which is kinda why they said it had to be at the board's, said it has to be at your discretion, and the. Guys of the Legion didn't seem to have any problem with that, they, I couldn't get them to nail it down.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and by the time I did get a letter, they, they were no longer opposed, I mean, they're.
Mm-hmm, we could take it out and loan it back to ourselves and then have payments to, just kidding.
Put it in this reserve and then create this reserve, fund that and, yeah.
So did they come up with the Scott Flanders American Legion Fund?
No, they did not.
Yeah, let's grab that.
You wanna get rid of it and call it?
I just put it in one of our, we already have.
Oh, yeah, we don't want, we don't need.
We don't need another layer.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Confusion.
And have to.
Okay, so do you want me to put it in the monument lot?
I, I like the monument lot to keep it simple, it's easy and you never have to talk about it again. And you could still use that for like your thought of the memorial.
Yeah, as long as we know that there's a flexibility to move it to other community purposes around. Veterans, whether it's the field or the cemetery sites, the, those are all good examples.
Yeah.
As long, but I don't care where it starts, as long as we have the flexibility to.
Well, we can move any equipment, the only thing is, we don't have the. We can't move money around out of reserve accounts for other uses other than.
Well, for example, we talked about building a new road over there, it would be great to be able to utilize some of these funds for that. And that would be a good purpose.
Yeah, it's civic, civic.
Yep.
Which is why they.
But if you put it in the monument lot, reserve, you're not gonna do that.
You could even make a road reserve for the park. A mo- memorial road reserve, uh, whatever, but.
That's why I was gonna say, you may get the legion fund and then.
Then, then.
Yeah, that's gonna get you, I just, yeah, I'm just worried, cause everybody's gonna, well, who's gonna control it, where's it gonna go?
Well, if, if, you still would have to get permission to spend the money, wouldn't you? If it's in the legion fund and you wanna take ten thousand dollars out to help defer the cost of a road over in the field, you're gonna have to go and get it voted on.
So what's the difference, even put in the monument reserve, thirty eight thousand, and we decide. In the spring or in midsummer or next year, we need ten thousand for the. Veterans field for the road, we could have it as a, that we're gonna take it out of that reserve account.
Yeah, I, maybe it doesn't need to be under monument, it's veterans reserve or veterans, something.
I was just thinking, we already have an account without creating more.
Cause you have to track it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I know, cause I'm trying to track them already.
Yeah, yeah.
And. They change, you know, the fire department, the fire truck, the fire equipment, the fire.
Yeah.
Firehouse improvement, the town hall painting, the town hall renovation or town hall improvement.
Yeah.
The. Yeah, and they don't, you know, it's complicated and I'm not.
So you have everything from them as far as a letter or anything like that, so.
I have a letter, I have a letter right here, let me read it to you.
Well, I don't care if you read it, just if you've got something so you can put in the folder with the monument lot reserve. So that if we put it all under that reserve account, it's in an umbrella, in two years from now, if we wanna move some of the money out of that reserve account. Could be used for something up on the field or whatever, we've got a statement from them that you could go back and say.
You said we could use it all.
Consistent with what was said.
Yeah.
And how much money is in the monument lot reserve fund right now?